Good morning, everyone. Today is Friday, March 12th, 2021. You are joining the Birmingham Public Schools Board of Education meeting. At this meeting today, our goal is to discuss and come up with our one firm recommendation, to which we will use during our superintendent search. My name is Kim Whitman. It is my privilege and honor to serve as president of the school board for the 2020-2021 school year. Trustees, that is the only agenda item for today's meeting. Our first order business is roll call, so Joan, I will turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, President Whitman, and good morning, everyone. Trustee Angelina.
Present, and good morning, everyone, too.
Oh, yeah, I hear.
Hello. Trustee Joseph?
Good morning, and I'm here.
Good morning. Trustee McKinney?
Morning, I'm here.
Hello. Trustee Rass?
Here.
Good morning. Trustee Whitman?
Present.
And Trustee Young?
Here.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Joan. Allow the minutes to show that for our Friday, March 12th meeting, all seven trustees are in attendance. And trustees, this is, this is, um, this is day five of five with all of us together. So happy Friday. Uh, the next order of business is public comment, and we do not have any public comment submissions. So with that, we will then open up the agenda to discuss and decide on a search firm for the superintendent search. So how I'd like to do this is just go around. Obviously, we know we're being, uh, we're live, we're on video. So I'd ask each of you to give a few short minute discussion of the firms that you'd like to use. Um, and I think just through natural selection, it may shake out to maybe one or two that it comes down to. So with that, uh, who would like to start first, Adrian or Trustee Young?
Um, I, I would like to move forward with focusing our discussion on BWP, which was the first firm that we interviewed, and MLI, which was the last firm we interviewed. Um, I really enjoyed our interview with BWP and think they would be a good fit because, um, they had a three-person team that would be entirely focused on BPS. They have a nat-, they have a national reach. Um, they had really solid answers with, um, diversity and equity. And the fact that their staff, um, reflects that belief in diversity and equity and that our team would be led by a black woman was very important to me. Um, and they, albeit a limited reach in Michigan, they did have, um, they did have the selection in Forest Hills, which is on the west side, but a similar district in terms of performance to us. Um, so for all those reasons, I like BWP, the reasons I like MLI. Um, uh, in large part echo, uh, Trustee McKinney's praise of, um, of John Silvery's candor yesterday. Um, his answers were, were incredible and honest and forthcoming. Um, and his knowledge of the district is truly unlike any other firm and is helpful in a way, um, and is helpful in a way. And I say in a way purposely because it also does make me a little apprehensive, um, for the reasons that Trustee Hokumer has brought up about the makeup of, um, Oakland County superintendents and, and trustee, and, um, John Silvery was forthcoming about that, saying that they all very much look like him. Um, but, but, and said he was willing to put forth extra effort to make sure that that wasn't the case with our candidate pool. But his answers weren't as strong in terms of, um, they didn't, it didn't seem like it would come to him naturally, which I think is honest. Um, as, as a white male, I don't think, um, and as a white female, I don't think it, it would come to you naturally. But, um, so I appreciated the honesty, but it was also apprehensive about his ability to reach out and, and bring us a diverse pool of candidates. Um, but nevertheless, I, I appreciate his candor, his knowledge of the district and his understanding that it's demanding and that we want someone with staying power. So that kind of honesty, um, is, is priceless. So in conclusion, I'd like to, to center our discussion around BWP and MLI. Kim, you're muted.
Thank you, Adrian. Uh, Trustee McKinney?
So I promised that Trustee Young and I did not discuss these two, but those were my exact same two for the same reasons that she stated. I liked, um, I actually was conflicted about having a local search firm and a national search, search firm. So I think, um, I could make a case for both. Um, what I liked about BWP was that they had a diverse pool that we could, um, choose from, and it would bring a different profile, um, for us to consider. And I liked John Silvery's, um, responses to my questions. He was very candid and he is very familiar with our community. And I think he understands the uniqueness and challenges and would have an understanding of what type of candidate we need and would be very invested in the process for us.
Thank you. Uh, Secretary Rass?
I too, um, support BWP and, um, MLI. I think, um, all of the reasons that both Trustee Young and Trustee McKinney, um, mentioned for both. I think with, um, Michigan Leadership Institute, I really liked the way that, um, Mr. Silvery walked us through the entire, what this looks like from week one to week 13 or 12 or however long of a process this is. Um, I, I thought his transparency, his candor, his calm demeanor, um, as well as the, the, having the knowledge, um, of our district. One thing that struck me, um, I'm looking through my notes, is that all of his superintendents that he's passed or that he has placed, I'm not going to find it, um, all of the superintendents that he's placed are still holding their positions, which to me speaks volumes, um, and something that I think is, is really important and, uh, something we're really looking for. So, um, those would be my two firms as well.
Thanks, Jen. Lord, uh, Trustee Joseph?
Yes, thank you. Good morning again. Um, I did like both as well, but I, I kinda liked School Exec Connect a little bit more for three reasons. One, is they have both a local connection and the, and the national connection, where I feel they would bring us a larger pool of candidates. They also mentioned in their presentation, without any of us asking them about how they care about, uh, hiring a minority and being equitable. And they specifically mentioned, um, a hiring of, of African-American women in New Jersey in one of their top school districts. And also, they had many repeating customers like Farmington Hills and Grosse Pointe without being, falling into the, uh, guarantee, and they also provide us two-year guarantee, uh, which is a, uh, a little bit more than some of the others. I know they are, seems like they are the most expensive, but, um, like the gentleman said, sometimes, uh, expensive, uh, you know, you get what you pay for. So that's kind of my choice, but I'll, obviously, I'll go with the majority and I'll be more than happy to comply with that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Trustee Joseph. Uh, Treasure Hokumer?
So, um, I would support BWP and MLI. Um, I thought that the, the team for BWP was very dynamic. Um, I, like Nicole, I, I balance the national versus local firm. But I do think that, um, you know, depending on what we decide, a national firm could bring us a perspective that maybe we don't recognize in ourselves right now. However, on the other side, I appreciated how, um, much John Silvery seemed to have his finger on the pulse of, um, our district. Some of the challenges we faced, I think he was the only, of all of the firms, he was the only one who acknowledged that our search isn't necessarily going to be easy. And so I appreciated that honesty from him because, um, you know, as trustees, it's on us to make sure that we face those challenges and make sure that we recognize them and move forward as strongly as we can. Um, I was originally not, um, a big proponent of MLI because I didn't feel that they had enough of a diversity protocol. However, John Silvery did do a good job of convincing me that he could bring us a diverse pool. So for all those reasons, I, I would support those two.
Thank you. Vice President Angelina?
I also had narrowed it down to these two. So we are talking BWP and MLI, both. And, um, really with it, with all the trustees and what they said prior to, to my comments, um, you mentioned all of the areas that I truly felt were very important in deciding a search firm. If I were to add two things, I would say, number one, um, I was looking at price. I was trying to be fiscally, um, responsible. Even though I don't do that here in my own household, I'm, I'm very conscious of doing that. Well, a good job in, in the district. So I was looking at price and, and the, these both firms are reasonable. They're, you know, they're right in the middle. And then the second factor that nobody brought up that I want to mention is that John Silvery not only has a good experience working with Birmingham and knowing our district, but he's worked firsthand with our CLT, with our staff. He knows their personalities, he knows the dynamics, he knows the interworkings of, of our district. Um, and these are priceless advantages. And I think, excuse me, working with John, he will keep all of that in mind when bringing forth candidates. And to me, that was very valuable and no other, um, search firm could do that. No other rep for a search firm could do that. And so I, I weighed that very high. And that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. So, um, it looks like from the majority, that comes down to BWP and Michigan Leadership Institute, MLI. Um, so trustees, with that, as we start to line the two next to each other, anything else, anything more, now that we know we're looking at these two, to take into consideration? Trustee McKinney?
I would just say, I think the two things that I will be taking into consideration is timing. That came up, um, repeatedly that we're running out of time. So we need someone who can hit the ground running. Um, and also kind of where we are in terms of a district and community and what we need in this moment.
Thank you. Uh, Lori?
I, I was very impressed with, with all of the interviews from each one of the firms. I, I truly was, and I, there were so many common procedures and policies and guarantees that, you know, it made this decision-making rather difficult. Um, but I, I'm going to go back to what I just said two minutes ago, that I found the personal knowledge and experience gained with MLI having John Silvery complete our search. Pardon me, I'm so sorry. I'll do our search, just kind of tip the scale and is giving me a, a more comfortable and confident feeling.
So you're leaning at, towards MLI?
I am.
Okay. Trustee Joseph and then Trustee Young? Excuse me.
Thank you. I would like to echo Vice President Angelina that I did feel he was a little bit worse. I mean, they were all good. I don't want to, uh, they were all hard to pick one or two, um, honestly. So I was impressed with all of them. But, uh, if I had to pick between the two, I will pick MLI, too. He does know our district a little bit more, uh, actually a lot more. And, uh, he does have the good relationship, like, uh, Vice President Angelina said. And I do believe he understands our timing, which is really critical. And, uh, so I will lean toward MLI on my vote between the two.
Thank you. Uh, Nicole, will you next? Oh, no, sorry, Adrian, sorry.
So I'm like really, really struggling. Um, but I have like a s-, ever so slight lean with BWP, but it's, it's super slight and I'm, um, like I said, I'm really struggling, struggling. I love that BWP had all three individuals who will be focused on our search. Um, I think that, um, what I didn't have in mind that Trustee Hokumer just said about how like we don't know what we don't know or whatever, like we've had, um, someone shared it in the past meeting, four superintendents in five years or four superintendents in two years or something like that, all of them local, one of them being the leader of the MLI search. And so to, to Trustee Hokumer's point, it might be great to have not just a breath of fresh air, but like a well-established breath of fresh air. Um, you know, to BWP's point, they, um, they are conglomerate, including, wasn't it them? Who was one of, who merged together with the oldest firm, the oldest search firm in the nation? So it, it's not like we're jumping out on a limb and saying like, okay, fresh, um, a fresh perspective. It's, it's an established fresh perspective. You know, um, Dr. Ann Nolan had really good stats, um, associated with her searching. The other thing I wanted to point out is they came to the table saying, hey, um, Celine, Troy, Grand Haven, Midland, and Andersonville are all like in my phone book. They're my local contacts, Troy being our, our neighbor in a high-functioning district. I really loved that they came to the table saying, hey, these are, these are the people that I talked to, um, already. And so they knew their weaknesses and were already gap-filling, um, before even just this initial interview. Um, but I will say to MLI's credit, um, and this speaks to, to John's candor, he had that established timeline and, and we, and talked about how we might be behind other districts. But he said, um, he's, he will push back on us if we are forcing him down a, a lane that's, that's too heavily focused on efficiency and not focused enough on quality, um, because we will bear the, the burdens of that, and he knows it. Um, the other thing I liked, and this is so stupid, um, but I love that he had binders for us for the questions. Um, I love ease and organization and I could, I could visually picture the binders. I just loved, I loved that it was teed up and organized in a way that, um, that could help me be successful. I really loved that. So, um, you know, if it comes down to, to that, like, the little things do make a big difference. So I really liked the binders, but I'm, I'm a slight lean towards BWP, but, um, I, I'm really happy with either. Honestly, I'm very, very conflicted.
Uh, Treasure Hokumer, thank you, Adrian.
Okay, sorry, I have a dog running around the house with a squeaky toy. I'm hoping that it's not going to interrupt us. Um, so I, I have to say, I'm with Adrian, like, the, it's so equal that it's very hard for me. Um, I think, I, honestly, I could go with either, like, majority rules for me here. But I do think we need to recognize that although John is very familiar with our district, um, I think the last year has changed our board in a lot of ways or changed our board dynamics. I think it's changed the, um, I think it's changed our community. And so that's where I, that's where I appreciate the fact that maybe, um, a more, um, distanced firm would see something that the rest of us aren't seeing. But John did address those concerns. Um, and, and I also do think he's more aware of our challenges. And I, for one, think we desperately need to be able to find a superintendent who will be with us for many years to come as opposed to the shorter term that we've had for the last couple soups. So, um, like I said, it's, it's really hard.
It is. So for what it's worth.
I'm not going to point in with either.
Yeah, so for what it's worth, our last two superintendent searches were, we used national firms. Um, for the Dan Neerad, it was School Exec Connect. And then for Mark, it was, um, HYA. So we have not in, and maybe George or Joan, whoever, maybe they'll do the history. I don't believe we've ever used, um, a local firm. So again, as we start to look at, looking at ourselves, and again, I, I could go either way. Is it maybe better to get someone that's local, so they do know us, versus trying to get a national firm? Um, because again, that's, that's been our history.
And did those national firms really get us a pool that was that significantly different from the pool we would have had otherwise? Because I've weighed that, too, in terms of, you know, you're going to pay a little bit more. But our last search within the finalists, all of them were from Michigan with the exception of one who ended up, I think.
Dropping out. He, he, right, he did, yes. Um, uh, first Jen, sorry, then Lori. Go ahead, Jen.
Um, I too, it would be conflicted, but I, I really think, um, for me, I'm leaning towards, um, Michigan Leadership Institute. Um, something that John said that I think he took it a step further than the rest of the firms was after our superintendent's place, that he would, um, would host governance meetings, not only the beginning, but quarterly if we wanted, just to ensure that all of our new board with our superintendent. Um, and I think that that's something we as a board, um, have been working on, especially, you know, over the past six months. But I think that that's going to be instrumental for the success of our board, working with our new superintendent. Um, and I know that the other firm said that they would stay in touch for a year after with the superintendent, but I believe John was the only one that said that he would facilitate that governance portion with the new board and the new soup. And, um, for me, I think while Amy and Adrian, bringing an outside firm, looking in, I, I think that that's great, but it, for me, I looked at it a little differently. That with John already knowing our district, our leadership team, our schools and our community, um, I, I think that does, he could help in kind of the healing process of just the pandemic and everything that we've been through over the past year with being in and out of school and, um, looking for a new superintendent. So I think just having that personalized focus and history with Birmingham would be a benefit. And I think that's why I'm leaning towards MLI for those two reasons.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, Lori?
I was just going to say, in terms of, um, casting our net nationally, we did have, Dr. Neerad was not from Michigan, he was from Wisconsin. And I believe, I am not positive, so please don't, um, hold me to this, but I think Dr. Larson was also from a different state. He was from Chi-, uh, Chicago.
Illinois.
Illinois, yeah, Illinois, from the Chicago area. So we've had, we've had national, um, candidates and superintendents we had before. Um, um, and the other thing I was going to say is, I really liked the idea that MLI had two unique features. And Jen, you touched upon one, was the, the new governance body workshops that they held. Uh, and the other one was visitation to the candidates' work sites. I, I've never done that before, and I think that could pose a, a very valuable piece of information for us on a candidate. Um, there also were leadership academies that they offered, which again, was a very big positive. Um, I loved the dynamics of BWP. I mean, I thought the team was just really, uh, energetic and dynamic. So I, I'd be happy, very happy with either one. But as Adrian said, or Trustee Young said, it's such a, it's such a minor advantage that I would, sorry. I think that MLI might have, just have slight, uh, advantage for me. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh. Other comments? Oh, Trustee Young, and then Nicole?
Well, I myself don't have a comment, but I was interested in where you were at, too. So I was hoping that you would share. I appreciated learning that historical perspective. Um, I hadn't put two and two together, that the last search firm, uh, it felt so local to me. I think because the, our lead was a West Side the State guy.
Yes.
And a former, I think a former soup from over there that I, I just didn't pinpoint that. So I appreciated that, but I don't know if you want, Trustee McKinney to go first and then?
Uh, go ahead, yeah, perfect. Nicole, and then I'll give my comment.
Sure. So I'm still conflicted for a couple of reasons. One, I feel that we need consistency in our district right now. That's very important, um, clearly. And I believe that MLI's, um, John's record demonstrates consistency for us. Um, the only thing that brings me pause, but I also think that John would be able to hit the ground running. He knows his way around the district. Um, and so he would be able to make a lot of progress quickly. The only thing that brought me pause is that he mentioned he was doing four different searches, all at different phases. And with BWP, we would have, they weren't, I don't think they were working on any other searches and we would have their full attention. So that for me is the only sticking point.
Thank you. Yeah, that's true. He said he's working on four, but at different stages of progress. So I don't know if one's wrapping up or not. Amy, and then?
Just to correct the record, Dr. Heitch has pointed out that Dave Larson originally came from Harbor Springs.
Harbor Springs, right.
Then he went to Illinois. So I was wrong.
Yeah.
Went there, he didn't come from there. So just for the public.
He did, he, he came from Harbor Springs.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so I guess a couple of things, given that, um, I was also president when we went through the last superintendent search. So I was side by side with the search firm. I went through the whole process. Um, I, in the beginning, I was very, what I'll call snotty about thinking that we needed a national firm versus, I think, last time Masby was the only one that, um, had given us a bid, a formal RFP, I think. Um, and so I guess a couple of things that I've learned selfishly, again, sitting in this president's role, knowing what it's going to be for the next six months. I, I like the way that John has it all wired for us. Adrian, to go to the point about the folders, because, um, last time, we, we did that all of ourselves. Fran and I were busy doing all of that. So selfishly, I like that John has this so wired that even though he may be his hand in four searches, I think it's just such a natural life for him, that he has it all wired. The other thing that I really appreciated him touching upon is that he's going to help us save ourselves from us. So that if we start getting into mucky water, um, the last time we went around, I came up with the interview questions for all of us. And I was the one that said, okay, Adrian, you're going to ask this question. Lori, you're going to ask this question. We're going to ask this. So we did the round robin with Steve Scheit and that whole group, Walter and Jessica. So I just appreciate, honestly, and this is very selfish, anything that they can do to make us, to make it easier for us and to keep it consistent. Um, also knowing that HR is my background and I've recruited for twenty odd, some odd years at PWC. Um, I believe that with all of the electronic forums out there, that our net is going to get cast whomever we use, um, between all of the national publications, word of mouth, um, certainly the superintendent commerce, conferences aren't going on face to face, but there's still, all those methods of getting the word out are out there. So I think, I don't know if it necessarily, um, matters one way or another if we have a national versus a local. I think, again, with all of the, the ways to get, um, the, the notice out there, that we will, that it's going to get across the country. So with that. So with that, um you know, I wouldn't be a CPA if I didn't look at the cost. MLI is $4,000 cheaper. Um I again, I liked the whole, to Jen's point, the governance after. Um because I think we really, we really are going to need that. Um and so and that's just John, that's in John's blood as well. I mean, it's Michigan leadership. He grooms and he he just, that's part of, that's part of his whole. Who he is. Um but again, I echo BWP was really good too. Um the three of them, they can hit the ground running. Uh but there's no doubt, working with John when he was interim, that he will, any deliverables we need. I don't care how many searches he is going on, he will deliver, has never failed in that regard. So. I think for me, I have a slight MLI preference, again, just knowing how snotty I was with national before and. I think let's give a local a try. But again, that's also me being selfish, knowing I've worked with John before. Okay, trustee, oh, so trustee Joseph and then uh secretary or treasurer Hokumer, please.
Uh President Whitman, I think I'm going to defend you. I don't think you're being selfish. I think it's just with experience. And some, and I believe experience does make a difference. So you experienced that, you're sharing that and I appreciate it very much.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Amy.
Well, so I I guess I really hadn't considered the um organization piece of it before, but. Um I I do like that piece of it because um you know, we're going to be very busy. With a lot of things over the next three months and so I I think that's an important consideration. It wouldn't be my deciding factor, but I do think um. Uh how, I I like the fact that MLI is clearly. High touch in terms of making sure that. They do the heavy lifting, we do the deciding. And I'll just say one other thing. I I was super impressed that John Silvery talked about mentoring so much. I said it before. And I'm going to say it again. I think mentoring for everybody in, no matter what role you play, is very, very important. And um you know, the fact that it's not something extra that we have to, you know, pay for. And that he is available locally via phone and you know. If you, if we decide to hire somebody who doesn't have as much experience. That mentorship, I think, is going to be gold. And um so. I guess maybe I'm leaning a little more towards MLI. But again, I could be convinced either way.
Okay, it's eight, almost eight forty. Do we feel like we want to take a vote?
Yeah, I mean, it it sounds like there's consensus.
So if we, if we're saying Michigan Leadership Institute. Just can I have a raise, a hand, I guess, a hand raise if you're for that? Okay. So I guess that's it then. Um, thank you. So Joan and George, um I will work with. Both you, both of you, as well as we'll reach out to uh both firms, all four firms to let them know. Um trustees, I would expect that the next thing will be this planning meeting um with. With Michigan Leadership Institute. Um and again, John will help us with regard to how much time to set up and what we're going to accomplish and all of that. So stay tuned. Adrian.
Um and I I just want to credit uh trustee McKinney for bringing this up in the chat yesterday. But to the extent, as we start this process, given, you know, he said, we're going to have a three hour meeting. We're, and we're moving back towards in person meetings, to the extent that some like this quick forty minute meeting. Can be um on Zoom, that would be much appreciated. So.
I agree.
Um despite the new um executive order currently being in place and us adhering to it for meetings for the public, if we could. Um just kind of try and strike a balance. And of course, to whatever the um candidates are comfortable with too. That's farther down the line, but I mean for us as well.
Yeah. No, I fully agree. Thank you. Um and anything that we can do to offer both options, I would like to keep trying to do that. Um legally. Um so we will, at next Tuesday's regular meeting, we'll vote. And we'll have a resolution to say that we will, we're going to hire MLI. So I would expect the process will probably kick off the week after spring break. Um but again, I'll work with John and Joan. We will start getting calendar invites out, or at least doodle polls of what makes sense. Because to Adrian's point as well, we are going to have a couple weeks of back to back meetings and I'd like to get those on our calendars now. Um just for planning purposes. Anything else trustees? Uh secretary Ras.
This weekend, president.
Thank you. And I'm now proud new owner of a new Peloton bike.
Thanks for supporting the BEF.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh trustee Young.
Actually, trustee Ras, I know you shared before we went live, but if you could share live and then again at that next meeting, how well. Yesterday, when I think that'd be a really fun way to end the meeting.
Oh, you're on mute, Jen.
You're muted.
Friday morning, um from Allison last night, sixty eight thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars.
So awesome.
It is very exciting. Thank you to everyone who supported.
It was, it was so cute. Uh Vice President Azaluni.
I just wanted to thank the four firms for their presentations. I thought each one of them did a very good job. It was a difficult choice to make. Um we had very close. Um as you heard in our discussion, very close um factors that kind of tip the scale one or another, very close. So I want to say thank you to them and um I guess we're we're going to move forward with Tuesday's vote. And happy birthday.
Thank you.
Birthday.
Thank you. All right, trustees, with that, um thank you. And and Lori, you're right. I would be remiss if we did not say thank you to all four firms. Um really nice, really impressive. We appreciate them all taking the time. Um and so here we go. We are on a superintendent search. So um have a great weekend, everybody. And we will see you on Tuesday night at seven PM. Have a great weekend, everybody. Bye bye.